Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 12, 2024 meeting of the North Attleboro Town Council. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome back, councilors and everybody else who joined us tonight. I hope you guys had a nice, restful July. And we have our one meeting hopefully for the month of August, so we're still kind of ramping our way back into it. And then in September, we're going to be back full bore. Tonight, we have a special meeting, right? We're going to talk about the town council priorities and the town council goals. Talk a little bit about that more later in the meeting. But it's always like one of my favorite meetings of the year when we have this opportunity. So we're going to set forth a lot of the projects and initiatives and goals that we want to get done in the next year. So again, glad we're able to be here tonight to do this. So we'll kick it off first, John, with the approval of the minutes from June 24, 2024.
Make motion to approve Town Council minutes of June 24, 2024.
Sorry, can I? I have a motion, Mr. Simmons, the second, Mr. Donovan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes? Six, zero. I know Mr. Gregory let me know that he could not be here tonight as he has another commitment. And Ms. LaBogan is also a little under the weather tonight, regretfully was unable to join us. So just wanted to make sure I pointed that out before we got started. So the next up on our agenda is Town Council and Community Announcements. Do I have any Town Councilors who would like to make an announcement tonight? Mr. Costello, please.
I just want to point out, I believe it's Saturday, 10:00 AM. The VFW on Jefferson Street is having a VA Claims Clinic. So for anyone who is interested in filing for disability or increase, et cetera, I encourage you to check that out. There have been new laws recently that were passed that have greatly expanded benefits for burn pits and age and orange and what have you. So if you're interested in that, definitely check that out.
Thank you, John. Do you know where people can go to find out any information on this? Or is it just you just show up at the VFW?
I think you just show up at VFW. But I know there's an event on Facebook that you can...
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Are there any other Councilor Community announcements? Well, I have one. And, you know, one of the things that we like to do, we have a lot of dedicated volunteers who, you know, commit their time and their energy and their effort and their intelligence and their skills to participate on these boards, not just council, but, you know, all the various committees. For example, Finance Committee, right, where we have three residents and four Town Councilors. And, you know, we have one gentleman here who joined us tonight. He was a good friend of mine and has been on the Finance Committee for the last two terms, so for about four years, gave a very valuable, valuable perspective, you know, and we just wanted to thank Chris Schamp for his service to the town on the Finance Committee for the last four years. And I hope that you'll consider coming back and joining us and taking on another role, the same role in the future. But I understand you've done your time and we really appreciate it. So thank you. Have the best. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Costello. Bye. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. So I believe that's it for Councilor Community announcements. Unless somebody else has anything. If they don't want to move on, Mr. Borg, Town Manager, report, please.
Council President, members of the council, a few items that might be of interest. We'll start off with the emergency management, a couple items here. Hurricane Debbie materialized in the previous week, and that was a good ramp-up event for the town. Worked very closely with our Emergency Management Director, Chief Coleman, as we began to track and watch this storm appear. A couple of the models initially had the town being in one of the past as it became a tropical storm and then was shifted to the left. And so we really kind of missed this event. But it turned out to be a good because we were able to coordinate with the city of Attleboro on the Ten Mile River and the Falls Pond level and coordinated the raising and lowering of dams and working with Mr. Halliwell and all of our folks to make sure that was happening. We were prepared for the event and in the worst. I mean, flooding has been a very sensitive subject of late, and we've had plenty of rainfall in the past year. But this was a good way to get ready for that event. We were grateful that it did move off, but it did kind of flush out all the systems and make sure that we were ready to go in the event it was worse than it was. Moving on, there was the fire at the Case property. You have some information on that, as well as there was a previous agenda... correction, a previous item that had happened at one of the businesses in the industrial park with an ammonia leak that the Fire Department, Chief Coleman and his team, along with police and DPW, all reacted there. Again, I would bring this back to the Town Council. This is another great opportunity for the local emergency planning committee, the LAPC, to step in and kind of look at what kind of preparedness and different things, because I do think the police chief was surprised by some of the events and the nature of how they happened and some things that they were able to spot-check while they were there. But it's a good opportunity for that committee to kind of dive into this and work with local businesses to make sure that we're prepared for any emergency as well. I did get a notification from the Health Department that we had a positive for triple E in the local community, so... or West Nile virus, that is, but very one and the same. We're working to make sure that people get the information they know and take precautions, right, when it comes to West Nile virus and triple E. And you can go to our website and check that out and see everything that you can do to be prepared for those events as well. Looking into communications and community events, I did my monthly Town Manager Report on North TV, a number of good topics to talk about. Please check that out. We did another podcast where we were able to highlight one of our police officers and our new K-9 officer as well. So that was a good... and it's on Spotify. If you get the chance, please check that out. You can find out everything that... what it took to train the officer and what the training that the K-9 is going through. It was very informative and was glad to be able to be supported, right? We also, on July 10th, did hold a... because it's been a while since we met, we had a Board Committees and Commissions Chair meeting where I held a meeting with all of the Board Committee Chairs and talked about the agenda wrapping up the year going forward, right? The new handbook that we had published for Boards, Committees and Commissions and working that and then getting input from them and also inviting them to the annual planning conference that we have scheduled for August 22nd. Also did get to participate in a really great event. And there are two people here in the audience today that were able to take part in that and help out earlier, but the ribbon cutting at the North Attleboro Pharmacy. That was a great event. We now have an independent pharmacy operating here in town, another, you know, feather in the cap of North Attleboro for being able to bring something like that in the town. There are some tremendous hurdles. You have some, you know, giants in the industry that kind of move and, you know, influence how things happen. So it's nice to see an independent, and they picked North Attleboro as one of their locations. Just as a note, on the 17th of August, the pool will close. World War II, we will close that. It's been a great year. We get the... here in Town Hall, hear all the splashing and the laughing and all the great parks and programs that are being executed that are happening around us. We love that. Another note here for you, early voting starts. It's that time, right? Again, for the state primary, you have the hours listed here and the days where we will be open here in Town Hall. Just want to say thanks to our Board of Election Commissioners and to Pat Dole and Janet for all that they do to make sure that these are all seamless and well-executed, right? Upcoming events, there'll be a ribbon cutting for the pickleball courts. That'll happen on August 24th. Farmer's Market's still taking place every day, right? And the Cultural Council's Summer Concert Series is well underway. Matter of fact, I think we have the headliner event, Kevin, who is it? The Toe Jam Puppet? Is coming this Thursday? Saturday? Saturday, correct. So Beatles on Thursday and Toe Jam on Saturday.
My kids loved that. When they were younger, they loved that Toe Jam band. I think there was birthday parties that we went to where they were present.
And thanks to Kevin and the Cultural Council for, you know, doing that. I mean, we had a great event with Paint North Attleboro. That was well done. And now with all of the Summer Concert Series, and this is starting to wrap up, I think it's a great way. And thanks to Kevin for all the hard work that the Cultural Commission is doing. Some notes on operations and economics here in town, right? So if... I think Melio from the Meat Bar, hopefully he'll be able to make it in tonight. We've asked him to talk to get his feedback from the program that we did with the ARPA funds and through Senator Feeney and the earmark, right? So hopefully... so we'll save that for him. Some stuff from DPW, right? And I'm going to turn it over to Mark right now because we've got one breaking one that didn't make it into this report.
Hey, welcome, Mr. Halliwell.
Thank you. Good evening, Mark Halliwell, Director of Public Works. We were notified this morning, the Water Department, that we received four hits on our raw water, two wells at the... that feed the Whiting Treatment Plant and two wells that feed the McKeon Treatment Plant for Enterococci. This is an indicator bacteria. It's found in the intestinal tract of warm-blooded animals. Also makes a good probiotic in certain doses, so it's not terribly bad for you. But so we met with the DEP this morning. Originally, we thought, since it's at four locations and we never get hit for Enterococci, that it was a lab error. They're pretty far away from each other. So we began taking samples to resample, five samples at each site, take them to a different lab to verify. And about two or three hours into it, the DEP turned around and said, you know what? We're just going to do a boil water order. We're still doing the samples and everything, but they made the decision. So the way the process works for that is we sit down with the DEP, they give us a piece of paper that tells us what they want us to say, we doll it up a little bit, give it back to them, they approve it and give it back to us. We got that back a little before four o'clock today. We had until nine o'clock tomorrow morning to release the boil water order, but we all felt that it was just prudent to get it out as soon as possible. Again, this is a precautionary measure. It was on the raw water before it's treated. We did do sampling out in our system on the same day for a total call form in a couple different areas in town, and those came back negative. So again, you know, this is an advisory from the DEP. The notice is on our website, along with an explanation from the town on our Facebook pages and whatnot. It's not something for residents to get excited about, but it is a boil water order, so residents should be boiling water ahead of drinking it or using it for brushing their teeth and what have you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Halliwell. Does anybody have any questions on this topic?
Council President, I would just add that we did notify and we used the Code Red system to notify the public. You can find the information on our website and either through our social media. If you have any questions, please call us directly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Borg, Mr. Halliwell. Yeah, I think these are the kind of situations that nobody really likes, but you got to be cautious, you got to follow, you know, the letter of the law and make sure the residents are protected. And so hopefully we'll hear back tomorrow. Everything's okay and we can get back to business, right?
Yeah, I think residents need to know and understand, you know, these things happen. This happened a couple Septembers ago with E. coli because our DEP is very proactive. And that's the same with us with the PFAS issues that we've been going through. You know, most of the other states in the country do not, you know, jump this quickly to address things. But in this case, the DEP decided that, you know, they just want to be proactive about it. They did take some time to come to that decision. And so when residents here, we found out at about nine this morning, we do have 24 hours to notify. We decided to notify earlier. We did complete the sampling and turn it into the lab at about 3:30 this afternoon. So it's a 24-hour time period before that gets back. So I got to be like five more seconds. So we should know by probably tomorrow around four o'clock. And then the DEP, if all of those are negative, then the DEP will issue a cancellation of the boil water order. We can also notify everybody through the same means we did today.
Excellent. Well, you know, I think we're glad to hear that you're being proactive about this, about this problem and taking the steps that are necessary to make sure the drinking water is 100% safe, as we know.
Yep. And I just recommend everybody check out the website and make sure all the information is on there. And we'll have more information tomorrow as we follow up on it.
Thank you, Mr. Halliwell.
Thank you.
Did you have any other updates or is that it?
I'll wrap my other board.
Thank you.
We've got the information for the Bristol County Mosquito Control Project, if you're interested in that. It's something that Bristol County does provide. The information is there. Just one note on the financial matters. We did have our initial meeting on the town side with the new auditing firm, CLA, Clifton, Larson, Allen, and that went rather well. We were, you know, exchanging information, talking about timelines and schedules and different things of when things might be available. So that produced very well. Last items for you on personnel, right? You do... We do have a couple of appointments this evening that we'll get to, and we're happy to do this, so I'll save that for... And then employment opportunities are listed there. Please check out the town website if North Attleboro might be able to assist you in any way in your future employment. Subject to your questions, that concludes the Town Manager's Report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Borg. Any questions for the Town Manager? All right, then we'll move on. The next item on our agenda, which is Resident and Community Comments. Are there any members, any residents or members of the community which wish to address the council this evening? Please step forward, state your name and street, if you don't mind.
Good evening to Celtica. I note in the agenda for tonight's meeting that Mr. Borg, I believe, is going to be proposing Measure 2025-005, looking for approval from the Town Council to repurpose $350,000 of funds that had been allocated for various projects and equipment purchases to be used to purchase a front-end loader for the DPW. These projects that are being repurposed or the cost being reallocated are in the fiscal year 25 budget. And despite several attempts on my part to find out what the specific projects are that are being deferred, delayed, canceled, I'm not sure, what are the specific projects that are being... where the costs are being repurposed for this front-end loader? I've made several attempts to get answers to my inquiry from the presiding Town Councilor and from the Town Manager. And I'm here because I still do not have a response to my inquiry. And I'm just wondering when I might be able to find out what the specific projects are that are going to be deferred, canceled or delayed to fund this reallocation of funds. Also, I'm looking for these... for the costs associated with these projects that are being deferred, delayed or canceled. And I'm wondering when I can get an answer to my inquiry. I've not been able to do it via email.
Well, thank you. I would presume, Mr. Simmons, if we were to refer this topic to the Finance Committee tonight for review, the list of, you know, projects, right, that are being repurposed would be a part of that discussion. That would be my best guess. I don't know the most...
It is actually on the measure.
It's actually in the measure that has it submitted.
Which is on the agenda.
Which is on the agenda.
Do we know at this point which projects will be affected in order to reallocate funds to the purchase of the front-end loader?
Yes, it lists every single project.
If somebody can...
Which has funds.
Respond to my inquiry, I would appreciate that.
Certainly.
Okay.
We'll also be meeting Wednesday to go over this in detail.
Pardon?
We will also be meeting Wednesday in order to have this gone over in detail at the Finance Subcommittee.
I'm going to be out of town on that day, so I'm wondering if somebody can give me an email to me and just let me know what the projects are that are being delayed, deferred, and what the individual costs are for those projects.
Sure. It's also posted on the town website as well right now.
Council President, any requests for information or document, we treat as a public records request and we pass them to the clerk, and we have 10 days to respond to all of those.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right. Thank you for your comment. And are there any other members of the public? Yes, please. Mr. McCarthy, please state your name, street, if you don't mind.
Kevin McCarthy, Chair of the Cultural Council. I'd echo what Mr. Borg said. We do have two more summer concerts left, one being forever fab, which is the Beatles' Tribute this Thursday, concluded by Toe Jam Puppet Band on Saturday. And I also wanted to publicly thank everybody that came out and all the businesses that supported my Leo Strong Buzz Off at Angle Tree on July 20th. We were able to raise a little over 10 grand for the family. So very good job. And we had a good turnout. About three dozen people got their head shaved, including Town Councilor. And we had about 100, 120 people that came out to support it, and it was a very good time, so.
I noticed the difference, yeah.
I let it grow out for three years.
Yes. It was great.
I'd say if I knew I could participate.
So that's all I got. I just wanted to say thanks and hope to see everybody Saturday.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Before... Are there any other residents that wish to address the council? All right. Hearing none. Mr. Borg, did you have something you wanted to get back to?
Council President, I just would like to publicly thank our Chair of the Conservation Commission, Mr. Clay Hutchins. He is actually departing and has resigned his position. He's moving away from town, even though we tried to convince him to this. But what an absolute benefit to the town. Somebody that is, you know, a resident that's connected, an expert in the field as it is, somebody that I've had a number of conversations with on a daily basis about the actions and the ongoing business of the conservation agent, the Conservation Commission and everything that they do for the town. We've not always seen eye to eye, and that's okay, right? But that's where we were able to engage in a good discussion and debate. And Clay really brings to the town something that will really be missed, somebody that really cares and is concerned on how the town, you know, develops, all the issues that they take on, and he will sorely be missed. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank him publicly for his selfless, dedicated service to the town. As you know, currently, these positions are all unpaid, but he gives willingly and freely to the town so that it's always a great day to be in North Attleboro. So I'd just like to thank him and present him the certificate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd say it's actually a good quality that, you know, the Chair of a committee, especially the Conservation Committee, maybe doesn't always see eye to eye with the administration. I think that's what we expect, right? That's why you're there. So thank you for your service. I'm sorry to lose you as well.
Yeah.
Mr. Borg, you're good?
I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Resident Community Comment is complete. Last chance. Move on. Thank you, everybody. So next up, Order of Business is confirmations, Measure 25001, first one of the New Year's. That's a good one. The confirmation of the appointment of Scott Smith as the Veterans Service Officer for the Town of North Attleboro. Mr. Borg.
Council President, members of the council, I had the opportunity to interview a number of very well-qualified veterans for our position as the Veterans Service Officer. We've been without a VSO now for about almost six weeks, and we put out the call for one, and we were absolutely fortunate that Scott Smith responded. Scott came through an interview. Now, Scott is a Marine and has served, you know, our country for a great number of years and retired as a Sergeant Major, quite an accomplishment in its own right. But we had the opportunity to talk about of those issues that face veterans today, what might be some of the most important ones. We talked about veteran suicide. We talked about why younger veterans, right, might not see the need or have that, you know, proclivity to come in and say, hey, what can, you know, you help me with, right? Until there's some type of crisis, right? The town does extremely well with its Chapter 115 program, and Nicole, who does a lot of the work, is absolutely spectacular. But there are a number of issues that veterans face every day, and the person that I'm asking you to support this evening is well-connected to those issues. You have his resume. You see that his background has been in service to this country. Scott not only lives in North Attleboro, right, but has a passion for North Attleboro and a passion for veterans. That made him stand out as a candidate for this position. And this evening, I'd ask for your wholehearted support and his confirmation to be the next Veterans Service Officer for our regional commitment to both Plainville and Rentham and the Town of North Attleboro this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Borg. Mr. Smith, would you care to address the council this evening? You're welcome.
Evening, sir.
Evening.
Members of the Town Council, I thank you for this opportunity, for hopefully your approval for my appointment as the VSO for North Attleboro. And again, sir, cut me off if I get too long. I am my father's son. But the passion that I have for veterans and veteran issues, I have been a family member or a veteran for my entire life. My father was a World War II Marine, had a flamethrower strapped on his back in Okinawa in 1945. My oldest brother served in Vietnam. Obviously, I served. I have a nephew currently on active duty at Camp Lejeune, North Carolina. And my son, hopefully this time next year, will be a commissioned ensign in the United States Navy, either being a surface warfare officer, a pilot or a sub-officer. So it's been a part of me my entire life. And being in the units and the commands that I was in for 30 years in the Marine Corps, probably the last 10 to 15 years that I did that, my job was to take care of my Marines. And when I was in a joint command, it was the soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, Coast Guardsmen and the DOD employees. And I feel this is the same basic job of helping out my soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines and Coast Guardsmen, and now Space Forcemen. Again, with their issues, their problems, it's a passion. It's... I can almost say it's innate in me to seek out and help them. Right now, we have, obviously, the World War II veterans are far and few between now as they are passing, and the Korea War veterans are getting up there in years. And now we're getting into the time where a lot of the Vietnam veterans are seeking assistance. And then from there, the First Gulf War, and then our most recent fights that we had in Iraq and Afghanistan. So... And I feel that I'm able to relate to each and every one of those different groups of veterans out there and want to help them out. I've lived here in North Attleboro for about six years now. I moved all the way from Cumberland, Rhode Island. That was a long drive. But I really... This town, I would have to say with all my time in the Marine Corps and growing up, what I used to say, I heard Mr. Borg say, it's a great day to be in North Attleboro. And my comment used to be, it's a beautiful day in Pennsylvania, because I'm from Western Pennsylvania. But I will tell you this, this is probably the most enjoyable place that I have ever lived in. Hawaii's a close second. But when I can go out for a morning run and I'm running through downtown, within five minutes, I'm running next to horses, deer and turkey, just a great place. So I look forward to serving not only veterans, but also the community involvement, working with the schools, working with the businesses. And again, as Mr. Borg has tasked me with, is getting the veterans involved. One thing that he and I can probably relate to is we never really like having mandatory fun in the military, you know, where you will show up and you will be here and you're going to have fun. But again, it's just being able to relate to those individuals and helping them out. I know that somebody referenced already that the governor just signed off on the Hero Bill or the Hero Act, so I'm looking forward to getting more involved in that. And I know coming up in September, there'll be a VA-type Town Hall at Gillette Stadium. So I'm looking forward to attending that and making the connections that I need to do to help out the veterans and also the community of North Attleboro. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, thank you. Thank you and thank your family for your service, past and future. We appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Smith? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That motion passes six to zero. Welcome aboard, Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next up, 25002, Confirmation of the Appointment of Paul Coloppi as a Member of the Historical Commission.
Council President, members of the council, Paul and I have had a number of discussions and some correspondence back and forth, and we found a place for him to land. Paul's somebody that's actually engaged with the town and is vested in, you know, making it better every day. We believe that the Historical Commission is a great place for him to land in this appointment and start making an even more greater impact.
as the Veterans Agent for the Town of North Attleboro, Rentham, and Plainville.
Second. I got a motion from Mr. Simmons, a second from Mr. Costello. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That motion passes six to zero. Welcome aboard, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, our Major.
Next up, 25-002, confirmation of the appointment of Paul Collopie as a member of the Historical Commission.
Council President, members of the council, Paul and I have had a number of discussions and some correspondence back and forth, and we found a place for him to land. Paul's somebody that's actually engaged with the town and is vested in, you know, making it better every day. We believe that the Historical Commission is a great place for him to land in this appointment and start making an even more greater impact than he does already in town. So we'd ask for your confirmation of Mr. Collopie for the Historical Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Borg. Mr. Collopie, do you care to address the council this evening?
Not really. Appreciate the offer of the help.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the offer. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Borg in this case?
I'd just like to say, I started my career in town government on the Historical Commission, so it's a great place to get involved, there are great people to get involved there, so welcome aboard.
If I could just briefly, I know Mr. Collopie, he and his whole family give back to the Town of North Attleboro. His son was the head of North Attleboro Travel Softball.
Excellent.
For a long time. He was, he was my daughter's coach, and I know that Paul has reached out a number of times trying to find a spot to serve in town, and I am very glad that we finally have a spot for him to land, and I look forward to him being involved.
Excellent.
An excellent, an excellent addition to the town.
Fellow Natsa man, that's good.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
My son.
Still stopping shop for him.
I was a supporter.
Very good.
Did a job up there.
Very good. All right, any other comments? All right, here and done, I'll take a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve Measure 2025-002, confirmation of appointment of Paul Collopie as a member of the Historical Commission, term set to expire on 6/30/27.
Second. Got a motion from Mr. Simmons, a second, a quiet second from Mr. Shanahan. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That motion passes six to zero. Welcome aboard, Mr. Collopie, thank you. All right, next up, 25-003, confirmation of the appointment of Faith Wilder as a member of the Cultural Council. Mr. Borg?
Council President, would you be willing to take both of the next two at the same time?
And Measure 25-07, confirmation of the appointment of Lauren Mello as a member of the Cultural Council.
Council President, members of the council, what a unique opportunity we have this evening, and it really is a testament to how great North Attleboro really is. Through Mr. McCarthy, he approached me that he had some individuals that were 17-years-old, rising seniors at North Attleboro High School, right, and wanted to be members of the Cultural Commission. So we're asking for, and this is a one-year appointment, as they are rising seniors and they do have plans, to go off to college in the next year, right? And we did reach out to the town attorney to confirm that this was, without issue or any obstructions from at least the mass general law perspective, and we were cleared that they were. But I had the opportunity to sit down with both Faith and Lauren and talk about how they can make an impact in our community today. If you recall the ribbon-cutting ceremony at the North Attleboro Pharmacy that I talked about earlier, if you walk into the pharmacy and you walk in and you go through the front door and you look immediately to the left, you're going to see a mural on the wall. The artists are Faith and Lauren. They're both here today, right? These are young women that are rising in our community to answer a shortfall that they see where they can, might be able to provide some input. They want to see more involvement from our high school students and people their own age, right? They also bring to the table a connection of what's happening now and new today that might be foreign to some of us that are a little older, right? But I thought, in working with Mr. McCarthy, the Chair of the Cultural Commission, that this would be a good addition, right? He has a large board that has numbers, so this does not impact it. It is a short term, it's not the standard three years that we ask folks to, but we're asking for one year. In the event that they decide to go to college, you know, they're not being held to a commitment or asked to resign. But what incredible young women with bright futures ahead of them, they have interest in art, right, in different ways, shapes, and fashions. We talked about different ideas that they might be able to work with the Cultural Commission and connect the high school to some of the events that are happening there. And look at, so this evening, I'd ask for your support and confirmation of both Lauren and Faith on the Cultural Commission for a one-year term of service.
All right, thank you, Mr. Borg. Ms. Wilder, Ms. Mello, would you care to address the council this evening, please? Step four.
I'd just like to point out Faith did a coloring book.
Oh, cool. So Ms. Wilder, I presume?
Yes. So, good evening, and thank you so much for having me here, it's truly an honor. I'm Faith Wilder, I'm an artist, a writer, former athlete, and most importantly, a student at the North Attleboro High School. I've worked with the council, or the Cultural Council, for a while and previously with making the coloring book, and I had always considered trying to sign up, but I felt as a student, I wouldn't necessarily have much of an impact because of how young I am. But that was until I had recently found out at the middle school that sixth-grade art classes were going to be cut, and it just made me realize that creativity isn't necessarily being as valued as much as it should be. And it just made me start to realize that I should be able to have an impact, and I should speak out, because this is something that I love. And it's not just art that I enjoy, it's just a whole variety of things that allow me to express myself, and that goes for my friends as well. I'm just in such a big community with friends and after-school clubs, and I really just want to give students like myself the opportunities that I never received and the opportunities that they might unfortunately not receive if they don't have the chance. And so I'm really grateful to be working alongside with my friend Lauren to do this, because together, I think that we can just shine a light on this issue and especially involve students at the high school like myself who are so incredibly passionate and talented and really good at what they do, but they just don't have the access and they don't have the word that they need in order to get out there. And so I'm just very fortunate to be here, and I really think we can make a difference.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wilder. Nice job. Hey, when you apply to colleges, I would say, take this North TV video of the speech you gave. Use that in your application package, because you're incredibly well-spoken, I think that would go a long way. So, thank you so much. Ms. Mello, would you care to address the council this evening? Please.
Sorry, I have to find my notes. I'm obviously not very tall, so.
Adjust it downwards, is that okay?
Yep. I am not vertically blessed.
It's gonna be okay.
Yeah. Okay. So first of all, I would like to thank Town Manager Borg. We had a great meeting, and I really appreciate the opportunity. I'd like to thank the council for considering me for this position. It is obviously an incredible opportunity to be here tonight, especially as a 16-year-old who's passionate about politics and the power of local government. Ideally, I see myself in law, specifically intellectual property, because I know the threat of AI to art communities is a huge thing. And so if I could help legally to, you know, protect artists, that would be great. So that's the future goal. Obviously, I have a lot to learn. I don't know a lot about local government, but that's why I'm here, is to learn and have the opportunity to do so. I am also incredibly grateful for my friend Faith Wilder. She has been the most incredible friend to work with for all this stuff, especially the mural. Working with North Attleboro Pharmacy, Abe and his family were, they were so nice, and really, they were the ones that kind of pushed us to be involved in the community. It was so great to see like a young family that just really cared about North Attleboro, and it really like, it really sparked something in me to be like, wow, you know what, I can do this. And then obviously, Faith is the one that has really been like, Lauren, you need to do this with me. And I'm like, you know what, let's go for it. Let's do it, let's see what happens. So I'm incredibly grateful for that. I'm very passionate about art, as is Faith. Both Faith and I work together on a lot of projects for schools, so we both run the art club at our school, we both take part in the National Art Honor Society, we're continuing to expand that, and we work very closely with our art teacher. We both took AP Art this year, which is only running for this year because of our lack of interest, so we took it together, which was also great. So I, yeah, I have so much to learn, but I'm excited to be here, I really am. I just, I want to learn about everything. This is, this is so cool. I'm even being like, oh, I approve this, this is so cool to me. So like, I love this stuff, like, this is what I'm really passionate about, and the fact that I can combine my interest in law and combine my interest in art is so cool to me. So I'm really, I'm really excited to hopefully work on the council and get to know people. And again, I loved working with North Attleboro Pharmacy, so working with other local businesses would be an incredible opportunity. Obviously, North Attleboro Pharmacy faces, you know, the threat of CVS and big corporations, so being able to push back and be like, no, we're about community, is so beautiful, and I really hope that the Cultural Council and what me and Faith can do kind of, you know, embraces that, you know, small town, but like united, that would be great. Because I feel like, in the art community at least, it feels very isolating. I've been trying to reach out to a local artist and have, I've reached out to her three different ways, and I still haven't gotten a response. And I'm just, all I want is to just meet her and, you know, get to know her and see if she wants to make a connection with us. So it can be isolating, so that's really why we're here. We're like, you know what, we're going for it. So I really appreciate this, and I'm really excited to be here. So thank you so much. It is very great. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Couple of great appointments here, this is exciting. So I'll take a motion, please, you can combine them. Sorry, unless anybody had questions or comments?
Just have one quick comment. I had the opportunity to serve in my first term as the liaison to the school committee, and they had student representatives on the school committee, who I thought gave more to that committee than some of the elected members did. Their input and their, you know, speaking ability, their passion was overwhelming, and I've really found that our students are something that we should be proud of. And you will hear a lot of people say that art, music, drama round out your education so much more, vital part of your education. Art, music, drama is what makes us different than animals. We are using our brain and we are creating and we are giving back to our community, we are making them think and ask questions. I urge you to stay passionate and stay as advocates for the arts and music in our town, and I'm very excited to vote yes.
Thank you, John.
I, one of my hot-button issues in town is trying to get more people interested and active, even just voting in town. And it's so gratifying to see young women like yourselves not only being interested but stepping up and getting involved. I think it's fantastic. And my youngest son is a sophomore at North Attleboro High, so it's great that, first I could point to Megan Lee running for the school committee, and now I can point to you two getting involved on the Cultural Council and show him, hey, you know what, you don't have to just play sports. Nothing against playing baseball, believe me, but there are other ways you can get involved, too, in your town. I think it's fantastic, and again, like John said, enthusiastic to vote for you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. All right, I'll take a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve Measure 2025-003, confirmation of appointment of Faith Wilder as a member of the Cultural Council, term set to expire 6/30/25.
Second. I got a motion and a second from Simmons and Shanahan, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That motion passes six to zero. Welcome aboard, Ms. Wilder, take a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve Measure 2025-007, confirmation of appointment of Lauren Mello as a member of the Cultural Council, term set to expire 6/30/25.
Second. I got a motion from Mr. Simmons, a second from Mr. Donovan, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That motion passes six to zero. Welcome aboard, Ms. Mello. Thank you, guys, so much. Looking forward to seeing what you guys can do for the Cultural Council. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on. Next up, subcommittee reports, finance.
Nothing yet.
Finance, I'm sorry. Economic, any questions for Mr. Simmons? Moving on. Economic growth and sustainability. I had an item come up this past week, I was asked to put this on the agenda, a referral of a discussion about enhancing partnerships with our local businesses, charitable organizations, and community regarding special events. I guess I would ask if we could just refer that topic to the Economic Growth and Sustainability Committee for discussion.
I make a motion to refer a discussion regarding enhancing partnerships with our local businesses, charitable organizations, and community regarding special events to the Economic Growth and Sustainability Subcommittee.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Simmons, a second from Mr. Costello, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion to refer passes six to zero, it is referred. Next up.
They're just giddy and all.
They're celebrating. It's awesome.
It's awesome.
I remember leaving some of these meetings that excited. It's been a long time, actually. Bylaw, second reading and vote. We have a Measure 2024-121, the creation of a town audit subcommittee. It's the second reading, correct?
Correct.
So do we want to waive the reading of the bylaw, or is it sure enough that we should read it?
Are you asking me that? Do I want to read two full pages of a bylaw? No, I think I would be fine waiving it if everyone's read it.
I make a motion.
Anyone wants a reading? I got a motion. I got a motion to waive, I got a second from Mr. Donovan, to waive the second reading of the bylaw. Is there any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, questions? All right, that motion passes eight to, I'm sorry, six to zero to waive, and now we are actually going to talk about the bylaw, so I'll leave it to the chairman of the committee if he wishes to give us a, you know, brief synopsis of this one, for the public mostly.
Yeah, so we've discussed this a few times, we've been having, we had an ad hoc committee to appoint a town auditor, and this is a bylaw pretty straightforward, mimics the format of the other bylaws to make that audit committee a standing audit committee. A few key items are, they need to develop a scope of services no later than June 1, and then once the, once the report is filed, we, I'm sorry, the audit needs to be in its final form with the Town Council and no later than March 1 of the following year. The audit committee reviews the audit report by June 1 and reports back to us. There's the added restriction that we're not supposed to recommend the same auditor for more than five consecutive years, but generally, that's the gist of it. It just basically sets up a timeline and schedule for when the auditor needs, the RFP needs to go out, when the auditor needs to be selected, and when the review needs to be completed. Pending any questions, that's my summary.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Shanahan? My question is, what was the vote on this one from the committee?
It was unanimous. I believe we only had three people that day, though I believe it was 3-0.
3-0, in support of the?
In support, of positive, really referring it to the Town Council.
All right, very good. And with most of these, right, Mr. Borg, this wouldn't take effect for 21 days, is that accurate?
You stole my thunder.
I know, I had to do it. I had to do it.
21 days, it rests for an appeal.
21 days, okay, so we're gonna, it'll take effect at that point in time. So I would, I'll probably refrain from disbanding the ad hoc committee until such time. Not expecting them to meet or anything, but just for the sake of it. So with that, there's no other, Mr. Donovan?
Mr. President, I think there's a scriveness error on the copy that was handed out to us. If my memory serves correctly, we voted on a three-member subcommittee with two counselors and one resident.
That is correct. Does it still say five?
And this still says five members.
Okay, so this is the previous edition.
So I just want to point out that that's not, this isn't the correct version they have in front of you.
So we're making sure of that?
I apologize, yep, that's correct. Last, he's correct. Last sentence of A, composition, we felt that five people was too many, so we went down to two counselors and one resident. A three-person committee.
Okay.
After verifying that that was acceptable.
Is that in the, that is in the final language that we're voting?
That is, that is correct. This is the.
This is the copy of an older version?
That's correct.
Okay, so we don't have to amend anything?
We don't have to amend anything. The actual version that we approved is three members total.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, Dan, it makes sense. I figured there wouldn't be, I agree, actually, I don't think there'd be like a lot of takers to want to serve in this committee, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the concern.
Counselors, I'm concerned on this one, actually, but we'll put it in place. So, all right, any other questions or comments?
I got one. After the 21 days, do you stop looking for an auditor, or does it start looking for the group of people?[1779.16]
We just selected, we just selected our auditor, so it wouldn't happen.
Okay.
So after 21 days, what happens? Shanahan, the bylaw takes effect, correct, which is?
Correct. Which, again, the, the dates are, are set in, under Item D for procedures. And so when we get close to those dates, I'm sure that, you know, the audit committee will have a report and they can start their process. First step is for the town council secretary to issue, um, issue an RFP. And that has to happen, I believe, I believe it's June 1.
When you go out to bid.
When we go to bid, yes.
On the years you go to bid.
Correct.
Council president, what's, what's gonna happen is we're gonna post this to the website with the, the approved language that was voted on that you will vote for tonight and it'll sit for 21 days. That's the appeal period. Somebody that would potentially call for appeal and meets the requirements for that appeal would be able to bring that forward. If after, there's no appeal after 21 days, then the town clerk will enter it into the bylaws, right, and put it on the, our eGov site. So it, then it's populated to all of our bylaws and is updated as such. So, and then it becomes the law.
All right, very good. Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, I'll take a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve Measure 2024-121. Addition to Chapter 5, Administration of Government, Article 2, Town Council Standing Committees, Establishing Section 5-7, Town Council Standing Audit Subcommittee.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Simmons, a second from Ms. St. Pierre. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes six to zero. I would ask any counselors that would be interested in serving on this committee to please reach out to me directly and let me know, expressing your interest. And then I'll look to form it after 21 days or so. I, Mr. Borg, maybe we want to use this as an opportunity to mention, I know we have the ad hoc committee on this one, but what happened with our prior auditor in the report? Do you want to keep that updated if you don't mind? Since we're talking about the audit bylaw.
Luzzellian Clark was our previous auditor, right? Again, we went out to bid, you know, they did not submit a bid, so they are no longer our auditor. But they finished up ours. They had two single audits that were involved with the schools that had to be completed. Those were just completed recently. They were unable to attend tonight's meeting and they are not going to come back in the future. They have the audit reports. We'll turn, and I believe you've all been issued those as well or sent those. We'll make those all available to everybody and we'll post it on the website as well for the latest audit results.
All right, thanks, Mr. Borg. All right, let's move on. Next up, rules. Mr. Simmons?
Nothing to add at this time.
School committee representative, Mr. Costello.
Nothing at this time.
School building committee, what do we got? Mr. Borg, anything?
There's a meeting coming up this week, I do believe, or is it next week? This week? That's right, this Wednesday. We are now currently in the PDP phase where we're creating and giving more form to the various options that we will have to, we have until the September, October timeframe to finalize. That will be coming up with the potential choices and make a decision on which action best supports the community and going forward and presenting that to the public.
So some big, some big decisions coming in the next, in the next couple of months here. So I'm sure we'll have a lot more to report. Come on out of that committee.
When I, we have begun receiving reimbursements for the OPM and architects fees. So that's already started. We have received some payments.
From the MSBI?
Yes.
Part of this process. So that's, that's excellent. That's excellent. All right. Any questions? Move beyond. Communication, public participation and engagement.
Nothing at this time.
Local emergency planning.
Nothing at this time.
All right, we'll move, we'll skip item I. Next up, old business. None at this time. New business. Measure 25-004, authorization requested for the payment of an FY24 invoice in the amount of $3,515.50 for PV roofing LLC for repairs done to the town hall roof. We're not seeking, we're definitely not going to seek referral for this one, folks. And we're doing it right, Mr. Borg, because it is.
Less than a $20,000 threshold.
Yeah, this is less than a $20,000 threshold. You, why couldn't you have just done this yourself?
We received the, um, the invoice after the physical year it ended. And so we'd already closed the books out. So because of that, I'm required to come before the town council present it. We'd be asking to go to finance, see if this was over $20,000. This is less than that. But this was for needed repairs to the roof. It was in the budget at the time and we had that, but it's also in our current budget. So there's no issues being able to source this funding.
All right, thanks, Mr. Borg. Does anybody have any questions for the town manager before the referral? All right, I'll take a, not the referral, excuse me, the, the motion. I'll, don't worry, don't worry.
It's okay.
You know what I meant. Let's, I'll take a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve Measure 2025-004, authorization for the payment of an FY24 invoice, invoice number 240096, in the amount of $3,515.50 for PV roofing LLC for repairs done to the roof at town hall.
Second.
I have a motion from Simmons, a second from Mr. Donovan. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Borg. Next up, Measure 25-005, approval to repurpose $350,000 of funds that have been allocated for various projects and equipment purchases to be used to. Cut off. To purchase a front-end loader and appurtenances for the public works. Thank you. Mr. Borg?
Council president, members of the council. I'm sorry, individuals have departed because, you know, some of those questions would get answered at this point. But with that, this is, we're asking for a referral to the finance subcommittee for this. This is a project that was previously approved by this town council as a part of the CIP as an unspecified, and we didn't have the funding yet for it. Director Hollowell came to me and said that this particular piece of equipment was critical to the upcoming snow season and that the current one that we had was failing and no longer. I believe it was 19 years old. And so I began working with not only Mark, because he provided some of the funding for this as well, but also with the town accountant. And we began to look through the books for completed projects that were finished and wrapped up and no longer had any requirements. So we vetted each of the projects that were on here and determined that the funding source had funds that were available. We also went back to the department head and asked if they could vouch and say that yes, these funds were no longer needed. The only one on there that you'll find slightly different is the pickleball court for $250,000. That had been inadvertently booked twice in FY24. So that created a, an opportunity here to reutilize this. Now, if the pickleball courts weren't complete, then we would be saying, hey, we can't use that money. We need, we're still trying to build the pickleball. Pickleball courts are done. We had, it just unfortunately booked it twice. But you'll see, when you see $277 for a truck replacement, $977.72 for the big red bus, these are all completed projects, right? Or projects that the, the waterline one from the Royal Park Zoo had to be re-scoped and the, and no longer fit within the approved parameters that it was originally approved for and will return. But look at the trommel screener, $1,239.74. Again, that project's there. It's actually generating funds for the town. So with that, we're asking for your referral to finance, where, and through the good works of the town accountant, working very hard and diligently doing a process by which we're conserving money and not asking for any money that'll come out of free cash in the next round or to borrow, that we're using existing resources available.
Thanks, Mr. Borg. Are there any questions before we refer? I would just say, Mr. Simmons, that part of the discussion you guys have in the finance committee could be around, and I'm sure you probably already did this anyway, but it's just top of mind to me when I'm reading this, is just, you know, were there multiple options for this, for this vehicle? You know, have you gotten multiple quotes or what are, what are some of the prices on that? Because I think people are gonna look at that, that price tag for, for one vehicle. And I know it's a big, big machine that I'm sure is very expensive, but I would just like to make sure that, that's better as part of that discussion.
Certainly.
All right, so with that said, I will take a motion to refer to the finance committee, please.
I make a motion to refer Measure 2025-005 to the finance subcommittee.
Second.
All right, I got a motion from Mr. Simmons, a second from Ms. St. Pierre. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor to refer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes six to zero. It is referred to the finance committee. You guys are planning to meet on Wednesday, did I hear you say? This week?
Wednesday, this week.
Wow, all right.
Yes, our, part of our following the new rules regarding subcommittee schedules. We meet every Wednesday after the town council meeting.
Even during summer this month where we have two weeks.
I'm just always happy to say.
You could push it out if you wanted to.
John's a rule follower.
But all right, yeah, you're the.
That's me.
You're the chair of the committee, so you know what?
He's a lawyer.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stick my nose in. All right, let's get into it. Measure 24-008, multi-unit residence overlay district, MRod. Mr. Borg?
Council president, members of the council, this is making its first appearance in the North Attleboro Town Council, the MBTA Communities Act. You've received a couple items of information that I would like to discuss, but this, we're seeking a referral to both the bylaw subcommittee and the planning board, right? The governor recently signed the MBTA Communities Act into law. And you, you've seen this in the news. This is where a number of communities are looking at how and being directed by the Commonwealth to create an overlay of 50 acres of land to be zoned for multi-housing by right. So the town planner and the town planning board have been, you know, working together to put together a draft, which you have included with your copy here, of the multi-unit residence overlay district, the MRod, right, which would make North Attleboro be compliant with the MBTA Communities Act. Because we are an adjacent small town, according to the Commonwealth, because we live and border two communities that have rail stations on the MBTA line. And that would be Attleboro and Mansfield. So that's what triggers us to be a part of this requirement and compilation. What you see before you, and we're asking again for referrals, right, to start the discussion, this is their initial compilation and concept of what, how the town could be in compliance with this to meet the requirements. I do think it's very intuitive and innovative, the way that they've tackled this particular problem and looked at it and how the town might best be able to do it. And remember, this is only creating an overlay. It's not creating and then all of a sudden a developer comes in. If somebody owns the piece of property that's currently there, they would actually have to sell and then a developer would have to buy and then announce that they're intending to build in compliance with that overlay, which they would be allowed to by right. But it also has several components in it, in design standards that the planning board has put together. And this is designed to address the affordable housing crisis currently in the Commonwealth and addressing. Now, you have this, I also have asked Karen to send you the link to the, the Mass Government's page for MBTA communities. It has a plethora of information. It has all the diagrams of where all the different adjacent communities and types, but it also has the specific law 3A that is applicable to this. I've also included in your packet, and I think this is worthwhile for a brief discussion, of the zoning bylaws flow chart. Included in this is just my representation of how the process should go forward. I mean, we've gone back, we've done a couple bylaws, so I wanted to capture in writing kind of how we did this. But zoning bylaws are a little different because it gets a simultaneous referral to both planning board and to the bylaw subcommittee from the town council. So if you look in this chart, you'll, you'll see that the planner and the, working with the planner develops the concept. They bring that to me. I provide some input or guidance to ask questions. We review and draft, then a measure that we potentially would present to the town council, and then we finalize that, which that is this process. And what's in front of you now is that, that finalized version of that measure, right? We present this to the town council for inclusion. And so in our coordination meeting, that the town council president gets the agenda authority to put it on the agenda or not. So it's included. Through this action tonight, your vote would to refer it, will send it both to the planning board and to the bylaw subcommittee. By law, the planning board has to have a public hearing and they'll do that. So you'll see that right after their referral. And then the bylaw subcommittee also takes it up and hears testimony and would be able to bring in experts, the town planner, different residents, whoever is interested in the topic, they'd like to talk about it. The town council should also have a public hearing on this matter as well. And they should have that before the conclusion of the planning board and the bylaw subcommittee, because that gives residents now not once, but two opportunities to address the town council in a public format, but also allows that public input, the ability to go back to those bylaw subcommittee and the planning board to influence and potentially change the structure, take into consideration those items that were brought forward. And then what I've added and asked in this is to look at establishing a conference committee between the bylaw subcommittee, and in this case, the planning board, where they meet with representatives and come together and discuss each version or questions and concerns, and then hash out any details, and then go back to their respective boards to finalize and vote at the bylaw subcommittee and the planning board. Once those, they vote, that would come back to the town council in a conglomerate form, all alchemated with all the changes, and then a first reading, and then a second reading, and then if it's passed, right, you would get a zoning bylaw passed in the same process we talked about this evening, 21 days, an appeal period, and then a public. If it's no, if it's no, the, the council has an opportunity to send it back, right, for modification, more discussion, and we would go back up to the referral space where you see above if it's a no vote, or it could die right then and there, right? So this is just a flow chart to kind of hopefully assist with the process and assist with communication, coordination, collaboration between all the different parties that are involved and we stand ready to support. I, I do like the initial draft that the, and the maps and the overlays that the planning board has put together. And I, and I think there's going to be some great discussion around this. And I think there's a lot of discussion that should happen around this particular topic. So we're asking for tonight a referral to the planning board and to the bylaw subcommittee.
Thanks, Mr. Borg. I'm gonna, I'll take a motion to refer and then we'll have, if there's any discussion, we'll have it after that motion and then we can vote.
Make a motion to refer Measure 2025-008 to the bylaw subcommittee and the planning board.
Second. All right, I got a motion from Mr. Simmons, a second from Mr. Shanahan. Sorry, John. To refer both, to refer this measure to bylaw and planning board. Are there any questions?
Comment. So I've been, I've been following this process with the planning board and based on the rules set out, I mean, it, it very much benefits North Attleboro to adopt this because of the advantages it provides us, as it says here, mass works, local capital projects. And the planning board has done an amazing job of understanding the requirements that are in this law, I suppose it is.
This law.
And applying the restrictions and the rules into both the bylaw and carefully considering the overlay districts. It's been, we're fortunate to have such a competent planning board and they've done an excellent job up till now. So I look forward to our committee looking at it and working with them to get this finalized. But it's really hat tip to Marie and the planning board on getting this done in, in intelligent fashion that often I do not apply to town government or government generally. So it's impressive.
Thank you, Mr. Shanahan. Any other questions or comments?
Dan? I'd just like to clarify, Mike. If I understand the law correctly, in order for North Attleboro to be in compliance with the law, we would have to pass this bylaw by the end of December?
I believe that is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. So there is sort of a time limit on this, just so that everyone knows. And also, I've been following it, as Andy has. For those who don't know, Milton is currently in the process of a lawsuit with the attorney general because they are not in compliance and they're challenging some provisions of the law. SJC is gonna hear that in October. So I'm not saying we shouldn't pass it. I'm not saying we should. I still think there's plenty to be discussed, but that is something that could have an implication, particularly for adjacent communities, depending on how the SJC rules in that case. Just something that we should all be aware of.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Donovan. That's important context. I agree. So to know that timeline, right? We're not in a rush. I think we should, we probably should be paying attention to it. I'm sure that our administration is, is what's happening there, you know what that means for, for us in our town. Any other questions or comments?
Just one thing that I would hope that the planning board and the bylaw subcommittee look at, and I'm sure they will, because one thing that I know Marie does is look at the unintended consequences of what they do with zoning and planning. Just to make sure that the lots that we have selected that are presently owned, that changing the zoning of those lots doesn't inadvertently price them out of staying there.
I see what you're saying.
The property becomes so valuable for a new use that anyone who is presently using that property has no choice but to sell. I don't know that.
I don't know that there's any way to really guarantee that that won't happen, but just something to be looked at, just the unintended consequences of otherwise quality work.
Thanks, John. You guys said a couple of my, sorry, did you have something?
No, I do not.
You guys mentioned a few of the concerns that I had with this one, that I really want the bylaw committee to make sure they ask and focus on. At a high level, Andy, I would just ask the committee to take a skeptical point of view to this, you know, challenge, challenge things, ask questions, you know? Challenge your own assertions, right? In terms of like, going into this, I know you like it, I'm not putting you in the spotlight, but like, let's just give that, you know, give it the rigor that we always do. I know you would anyway. But to me, this is, to me, this is an important one. I always want to understand, you said it made me feel good, is, you know, why is this important? How do we benefit as a town? How do our residents benefit? Like, those are the sorts of things that I like to have spelled out to me. It's not my area of expertise, so when I get a report back from the bylaw committee, I'm trusting your judgment in terms of, you know, defining that for me. So that's something that I'm looking forward to hearing in the report out. I'd like to understand, you know, over this timeline, I know there's this deadline of December, how many communities have passed this, right? Have passed this law? What percentage of communities have this in place, you know? And, because I think that's an irrelevant data point for us in terms of understanding how critical that December timeline is. And maybe it doesn't even matter. Maybe it's such a good law, right, that we don't care about the timeline, we just pass it. But those are the sorts of things that I'm thinking about, if I do end up having concerns about this passing. And the only other question I had, Mr. Borg, you could probably answer, or Andy could probably answer, is the 40R that I recently passed, is, I'm assuming, does that not count for this? Or how does that, how is that different than what we're doing here?
No, no. If you know the, my understanding is that the lot size isn't large enough, right? The lot size is not large, and it has to be 50 contiguous acres to be considered for this.
So the 40R, yeah, fair. Thank you. All right. Any other discussions? I believe I already had a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
So if there's no other discussion, I will, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? All right, that motion passes six to zero. It is referred both to bylaw and the planning board. Thank you, guys. So next up is our FY '25 Town Council Goal Session. I'll set the context for this momentarily. I'm just going to suggest that we take a five-minute recess. That's where I think we're going to move places in the room, potentially, over to there. So it's 8:18. Let's say that at 8:23, we will reconvene. So we are, what's the word, I'm sorry?
We're in recess.
We're in recess. Thank you.
All right, guys. Sorry it took a little longer than we anticipated. It is 8:28 and we are hereby reconvened for the North Attleboro Town Council. This is the time of year, this is something that we started doing probably four years ago when I was on my first term as president of the Town Council, where once a year we get together as a council and we set our strategic priorities for the year. We agree, we discuss them, we agree on them, and then we talk about the individual goals that we want to accomplish in the next fiscal year. You know, one of our biggest responsibilities for the charter, for the Town Charter, is defining the Town strategic vision, right? So I felt that was something that we hadn't really done, we hadn't really taken ownership of it, you know, about four or five years ago specifically, right? And I think it requires an intentional meeting where we take the time to actually, you know, talk a little bit more informally, get our ideas shared, give all you guys a chance to have your ideas, you know, spoke about in public. Maybe we get a sense for, you know, some ideas that more two or three or four of us really, you know, think could be important, something we want to go for. It gives us a sense, it gives Town Manager a sense of, you know, what our priorities are and, you know, where we want to focus, right? And I know Mike, and he's going to talk about it momentarily. In the last year, we even took this to the next level where, coming out of this discussion with the goals that we set forth aligned with our priorities, Mr. Borg then went ahead and created his whiteboard up in his office in a timeline, right? And each quarter, he kind of said, here's what we can accomplish each quarter, here's who the Town Councilor is who's responsible, here's the department head who's responsible or impacted. And I think it really helped us knock out a lot of our priorities to get a lot more things accomplished than probably we would have if we hadn't done this. So again, this is like, this is probably my favorite meeting of the year, and I appreciate that you guys are here. I'm going to hope that everyone is just, you know, engaged and, you know, feels free to participate and, you know, let us know what you think and what's important to you. And I think one of the ground rules here as we get into this, especially with the individual goals, is we're not debating tonight the merit of the idea. You could come in with the craziest idea, we're not going to shoot it down. It's your idea, right? You know, so again, seriously, we're not going to be debating back and forth about the merits of these ideas. There will be a time and a place for that. This is just the kind of, you know, safety area. We are still on TV, so remember that, this is still a public meeting, you know? So you know what I mean. I think that's it. Another interesting, you know, thing this year is that we timed with, in collaboration with Town Manager Borg, we set this meeting up to occur prior to the Town Department setting their objectives and their goals for the year, right? And that's going to enable Mr. Borg and the department heads to take some of our feedback and input where appropriate and where he thinks it makes sense, help to incorporate that into the Towns Plan. So really, we're looking to align, really have a closer alignment of our government between our Town Council, our Town Manager and our department heads, and I think this is one of the ways in which we can do that. So I know, Mr. Borg, I'm going to turn the mic over to you for a second. The first thing we're going to do after Mr. Borg presents is we're going to talk about our priorities from last year, you know, review them briefly, and I'd like to hear from you guys in terms of if we want to make any changes, right? We could keep them exactly the same, we could totally delete some, we'll see what the appetite is in the room. And then from there, we'll go through the sticky note exercise that we've done in the past, where I'm going to ask you each, no more than like 10 please, I feel like that would be too many. I was going to say five, but then I had like eight, so I figured that wasn't going to work. So, you know, up to about 10 ideas at the most of the things that you want to accomplish in the next year, right? And try to position them if you can aligned to a priority. It may not be clean, it may not be one for one, you may align to more than one. Just pick the only you think is best. And then I'm going to ask Council Shanahan, or I've asked Council Shanahan, and he's agreed, just as he did last year, to help facilitate that conversation, you know, here's where the sticky note should go, is that where that sticky note should go, grouping the like ones, and let's talk about some of those ideas, give folks who put them on there a chance, others can kind of comment, who can kind of comment. I think that's really it. And then we'll have, you know, we'll take a lot of pictures of it, and that's going to end up being kind of our roadmap, at least to start the year as a council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of that? All right, I'm not going to monopolize the talking anymore after this. Mr. Borg, did you have anything you wanted to go over briefly?
Counsel President, thank you. I would just call in the handout that you got, the DNA of our relationship, right? Because I think this, like Counsel President, this is one of my favorite meetings of the year, where we get to collaborate, and I think this is what really makes us unique and sets us apart from a lot of other communities because of that inherent nature of how we've decided to work together and solve problems for the town, right? So if you look at that, that really does do it. Let me give you a real quick recap of what we did last year, right? And you had agreed to 39 goals, right? Yellow stickies that we created and that we backed and we put in different categories, and I divided those up into different quarters. Of those, 27 were completed, right? 11 are ongoing, right? Because some of them were never going to be one-year things anyway. There was like the first one we had, an affordable housing strategy. We were never going to solve affordable housing in North Attleboro in one year. This is probably multiple years, right? And what I would do with all of the ones that you add, maybe there's some repeats in there, right? And we can update you on those as well, but we'll add these into the next years, and I will lay these out in the quarter. There was only one that we didn't, and we weren't able to get to and start, so out of all of those. So 39, 27 completed, right? 11. Here's what we're going to take away from this and give to the department heads, and why this makes this meeting so important, and what makes us so different as a community because of this collaboration between the administration and the legislation. You will set these out, I will take each of these, right, and break it into potential quarters where we might do it, and then I'm going to take it to the department heads and say, how would we execute this? What tasks do we need to complete to achieve this goal, right? So you're going to do the broad vision framework of it, right? I'm going to work with the department heads to get into the execution of actually achieving that and making that goal a reality. That's the benefit of this, and it times perfectly when we do it, and I have the conference with the department heads on the 22nd of August. So thank you for this, I look forward to this, and then I'll bring this back with how we'll do it, where we think it falls, and if we're able to achieve it. And if there's one in here I don't think we could be able to do, we'll bring that back and we can have that discussion and lay that out for the council.
Excellent, thanks Mike. To be more informal, you can do that. So, very good, let's move on to the first part of this, right? We did send the goals, these strategic priorities out via email last week. They're always up on the Town Council webpage as well, so you can always go back and the public can go back and look at these, we may update them in future days. So the first goal that we had is to develop and sustain economic growth. I don't know if you want me to continue to read them all, but basically, develop economic growth was our priority. Second one was improving infrastructure and education, what we called a thriving community. The third was supporting public safety, emergency preparedness and human rights. The fourth was effective and efficient operations, transparency and accountability and professional development. And the fifth and final strategic priority of the Town Council was communications, public participation and engagement. So I'll just open it up to the group at this point. If there's anything on here that you'd like to change or any one of these you want to talk about, now if you have to change, just speak up.
I think we did a good job last year, kind of clarifying what we wanted these to be. I think they're all worthy goals. Some of them are mouthful, but they're all worthy goals.
You tried to streamline them?
Yeah, I like these streamlines, right? Yeah, this is good.
I'll say, the communication, public participation, engagement, we actually created a committee, you know, about that. So again, I think that was another outcome of just doing this process. Nobody has anything they want to change? That's a question. All right, so we're going to keep one of our priorities. And again, I think because this is year two of our term, it's the same people in the room who had these priorities last year, probably not going to radically change, but like, next year, whoever the council president is and the council members that are here, if they continue to do this process, which I hope they do, you know, it could change pretty dramatically.
Since we've solved all these problems.
Because we're so good. What else is there?
We created all new ones.
So why don't we move on? I'm going to turn this portion of the event over to Mr. Shanahan to kind of guide us through the next steps and the exercise that we're going to take.
Yeah, so as President Parra stated, you know, write down the specific goals that you'd like to see achieved over the next year, and put them up on the board, and then we'll try and streamline it, organize it, and have a brief discussion about how everything sets up.
I would just ask you, please put your name on the ones that you write down, so I know who to come back to later. Or write down your favorite counselor's name that you want to get.
Mine are all John Costello.
Boy, Darius and Mark Gould are going to get a whole ton of things today, aren't they?
Oh, just so you guys know, if you see me putting up like 13 of them, Darius did send me a text with a few of them earlier, so I'm going to put his up there as well. And I'll make sure I put his name on them, to give him credit. So yeah, so take as much time as you need, five, 10 minutes, I think is probably good, I hope.
Initials work too.
Yeah, write your goals and we'll stick them up on the board.
This is, I'll take a break.
Yeah, this is where you should commercial North TV.
Grab a snack.
Already?
You make up this in the mind. We're not.
Those are really good, I'm just going to write my name on those.
You can be a co-sponsor, sir, co-sponsor, right?
Absolutely. The more people who sponsor things, the better.
I can't see anything far away. Can't see far away. So one eye, can't see far away. I didn't know if that, I didn't want to write up four different ones, I just wanted to see.
Like, what's the other well that we're working on right now? Be fast. Thank you. All right, I'm doing mine, and then I'm going to do Darius's.
It's interesting seeing which one gets all the attention.
We didn't see you so close to the pump. You had so much pumped. Or is that?
I don't know. I missed this.
You put them in different boxes.
That's retarded. I took that one last time, I was in town. I wanted to stop because we had so much changeover in that department that maybe we need something to cut.
There's no running answer.
All right, now you have Darius's.
Channel 12 left too.
They were here for like two minutes.
Their timing was a little off.
I wish Mr. Peterson would have stayed though, I think that this would have been worthwhile because the discussion that happened is really, you know, although it's like watching paint dry right now.
This part is boring.
If you're watching on TV.
We'll have to hire like some dancers next year or something, you know, just get somebody, some sidebar entertainment.
Tony will do shadow.
Like the circus did, have it.
And for your viewing pleasure, while we're making stickies.
Blue animals.
Show a little cartoon or something, you know?
We can't move Bob Ross, right? Play a Bob Ross.
There you go.
Get everybody in the mood for good governance.
Get some sippy trees.
See, the girls from the cultural council should have stayed.
Anybody still working, some is working good.
This is fatal.
Absolutely.
New government, so people say, oh, it's just, no, we're working together constantly to figure out.
Well, that's the thing.
I think it's a.
Don't see, when they choose us if we're stamping you, they don't see all the work that went into the measure coming before us.
Meetings, yes.
Exactly.
We put it together, you make it happen, we vote it out.
Right. I mean, naturally, if we're the ones who said we want you to do this, and now you've brought something in front of you, we're not going to say no. Shouldn't.
But it's okay if you didn't. And maybe we couldn't do it the way we thought we might have been doing.
Big one this year, you know, it's certain years you see certain priority areas, right?
Well, and like John and I were just saying, there's things in, there's a few things that I put under infrastructure that could just as easily go under economic growth.
Yeah, agreed.
Cool if I move the code Red One to Communication?
You're the boss.
Yeah. Scary thought.
You're the moderator, son.
Yep.
The moderator.
It was nice of Cassie to come in with a change of shirt for me and sandals.
And he said, boy, I stink, so she was like, oh.
I hope that Randy Johnson next to me.
At the end of the day, you get what you get.
Exactly.
Modern version of the smoke-filled back room, right?
What do you football coach?
Stop hanging around the VFW. I guess I can still smell the thinking.
Oh, did you do Amy? Did someone do Amy?
You know, I talked to her and I didn't even ask her.
Oh, I was realizing that Amy took in as the same initials as Amy. I had also texted her, tried to ask, so.
I can see the resemblance.
All right, is everybody done?
Yes, sir.
All right, your show, buddy.
All right, so I'll start on the left. So economic growth, I think this is one I put up every year, but zoning bylaw overhaul. I know there's updates, I know we're working on it.
That's right, this was a carryover from last year as well, it's one of our, one that's ongoing, and it is still ongoing, and you'll look for something around free cash this year, but so we'll keep it in. Now, our proposal, I'll come back to you with this.
Was there other similar ones?
No, so I know that Dan has a similar concern, he was kind of put up, but he didn't want to know my thunder, which I appreciate. But basically, our zoning bylaws are 100 years old, and they're just an amalgamation of years of changes, and they're not really coherent, and in a lot of cases, they're not very encouraging of certain types of development that would really benefit the town. So I think like, mixed-use bylaw is big, open space, communities, lots can be smaller if there's larger areas of general space, especially if you're thinking about over 55 communities, which I think is a huge opportunity for our town. So I think that that type of stuff where you can do things that are a little more creative, that other communities have done, to try and encourage development of housing, that single-family, double, two-family, side-by-side housing with large open spaces, parks inside the development, but smaller lots, creates an insular neighborhood, it's a beautiful place to live, and it's very appetizing for developers. So that type of stuff right there, I know that the zoning, the planning board is working on it, so I look forward, hopefully, in our term still, to be able to work with them and get that finalized.
The other one, if I could just add real quick, with the most recent budget that was passed, ADUs, accessory dwelling units are now by right.
By right.
So that's an update that has to, in-law apartments, little houses.
You can basically build a 900 square foot house in your backyard and rent it out, so it's going to be an interesting.
To family, right? Does it have to be families? It's not, did it do that?
No, ADUs, in-laws apartments, but it does not matter who lives there.
Well, Allen did it a little differently. They put some restrictions on theirs, we pretty much did.
We're basically allowed not to. It says there's no unreasonable restrictions on any structure, so it's going to be an interesting development for anyone who has some extra room in their backyard, so.
What else can be done, you know, this year? Or, you know, I don't want to put you in the spotlight there, like irons, there's irons in the fire right now in this, is there anything extra that you'd like to see us do this year that maybe isn't already in the corner?
For the zoning bylaw stuff?
Yeah.
You know, I struggle with this, because I've talked to the planning board about it before, about, you know, individual sections getting redone to kind of revamp them, you know, there's again like the 55-plus community, which I think is a garbage bylaw, and I, you know, but the whole revamp has been in place for so long that we're just kind of, we're lumping it all together, we're going to try and hammer it out all at once, so.
I think you'll see mixed-use zoning bylaw come out, we're in draft form already, so that's going to be.
That's going to be big for the mall redevelopment and other blights, I would say, in town to give them mixed-use zoning and make it more garbage, so I think this is going to be huge.
Yeah, I'll say that I'd support this as well, I think that's a good one to.
Examine blighted and contaminated property to be redeveloped into more affordable housing opportunities, I know that that's also.
Yeah, that's probably, we have that listed as the Brownfield remediation strategy that we're working with. If you'll look at Webster Mill, right, we've already been taking some action, right, we're working on 35 Robinson as well. We did sell two of our properties this year that were blighted and abandoned, so that's making progress. We'll continue to do that. Right now, Tony's working on securing funding to help us carry Webster Mill into the next stage, right, and then potentially, and that's already spurred potential interest by other developers in the area, so looking at surrounding properties that are now taking an interest in that area as well. So this is definitely related to economic growth, but it's, the Brownfield strategy is one of the things, and that's what we lumped that one into right now.
Makes sense.
And even smaller properties like abandoned houses and stuff like that, right? The state sanitary code gives us an incredible opportunity to leverage that standard and try and take over these properties that are basically abandoned in place, but owned, a lot of them not paying taxes. I thought it was Saw Pump Email, but Sewer Pump At Mall?
There you go.
I have excellent handwriting.
I like that one.
It's good.
I think that resolving that issue, if not spurs, allows for growth in that area uptown, whereas now it just wouldn't be a problem.
And I put that under infrastructure, so it crosses over the two categories for sure. Infrastructure, second side there, ESM.
Emma's common.
There you go.
Yeah, I like that, good straddle, isn't it? Cool.
Okay, so on this one, which is a very important one, I have been before the Board of Public Works and addressed this with them, I've had a number of meetings with Representative Scanlon, Senator Feenley, and Congressman Ockham-Clos, we've been in communication about this as well. We've met with developers, we've met with the mall owners. We've got a grant application in right now for $2.3 million for a replacement. Mark has been working with the current property owners in that area where the current one sits, the mall owns it right now, they're agreeable to selling us this, I think this will happen in the next year, and it does straddle both economic growth and infrastructure. We have this under our Emerald Square Mall strategy, right? But it is definitely an important item that spurs, you know, growth in this area of town.
Refresh, I remember, I know you told us in the past, but what is the estimated cost of the whole project? $2.5 million?
$2.5 million.
That's the whole project, that's the whole cost?
Yeah.
Land value tax.
That's me. Yeah, this is something I've been doing a lot of reading about. One of the problems faced by a lot of communities across. One of the problems faced by a lot of communities across the country are people who hold on to land speculative. So they have a piece of vacant land and because they're paying ver, I don't want to say no taxes, but very low taxes. Because, all right, let me back up a step. If you look at your property tax assessments, the assessment is broken down into two pieces. There's the assessment for the land and the assessment for the improvements, which are the building on the land. So if you have a vacant property, you're paying considerably less in taxes than a similar property that might have a building on it. And in a lot of cases, this encourages people to just sit on these properties and maybe they'll do something with it, maybe they won't, they'll just wait. But what some communities have looked at, Pittsburgh is one that I ran across, is they looked at what they call land value tax. And they essentially flipped the formula. The thinking behind it is the land is actually the valuable piece of the puzzle because the land doesn't change. Think about when you see people buy a piece of property, a developer buys an old house on your street, what do they do? They tear it down and build a new house on it. So it wasn't the house that was actually the valuable piece.
Devalue the land.
It was the land.
Yeah.
And so you flip it and now these vacant properties, their tax bill goes way up because now they're being assessed at a much higher rate than they were before. This encourages them to actually do something with it. For the average homeowner, it doesn't actually affect them at all because essentially all you're doing is flipping the two pieces of the, of the, of the two components of the property tax. So this is something I think is worth exploring. I don't think it's something that would be implemented in the next year, might not even be the next five years. I don't even know if it legally can be implemented in Massachusetts. We have a lot of funny tax laws. Lord knows, I'm no land use attorney. But I think it's something that we should look at. The other piece that I came across is when you use land value rather than housing as your basis, it tends to be a more stable tax. Land values don't fluctuate because you don't have years that certain types of land are selling better. Like now you have years when capes are selling better, other years colonials are selling better. So those assessments are much more variable. Land value tends to be more stable. And so that provides a more stable tax base for the town, but also for the residents. They're not going to see wild swings in their valuations.
Out of curiosity, would that, like we just did our assessment, would that actually require the assessment to occur differently, to get the values differently?
Honestly, I don't know, Andy. I, it's a great question. Those are the kind of questions I think somebody far more knowledgeable about this than I do would have to look into. But I just think it's something worth exploring.
I think from the administration's perspective, it was very, very interesting. So when Council Donovan sent this to me, I immediately went to the links, looked at the videos, looked at all the different things and what folks were doing and read the articles. There are, there are two pieces of property that come immediately to mind here in town that I was thinking of and I thought.
Probably the same ones.
That, you know, maybe you could tie it to a specific overlay. Not all land is all going to be the same. Like there are different types of houses, but, but maybe if there was a certain type of overlay, let's say like this multifamily housing thing, and you're choosing not to do anything on it because you're being speculative. You're penalizing the town potentially. Maybe there's a way, because of that overlay, that you might have to pay something else until it's developed. Maybe. And I, I think there's a lot of work that would be done, but I think we're very interested in this one and want to dig into this one and figure out how we might be able to bring something back to the council to take a look at.
Awesome. All right, thanks, Dan. Another Dan Donovan one, review regulations.
Yeah, this kind of ties in with the zoning bylaw overhaul. It's all well and good to update our bylaws, but then if the department regulations aren't updated, that could be a stumbling block. So, you know, you'd need to look at the regulations for the building department, the board of health, animal control, you know, whoever has regulations that aren't, that are how they enforce the bylaw. Make sure those are updated as well.
So are you asking for the, maybe, I don't, words in your mouth, is this asking for the town manager or the administration to look at the regulations for the various departments?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just trying to call it into question as part of the whole process of overhauling the bylaws. I think it's the final step that you need to look at. And I don't think we, I don't, I don't think we tend to think of the regulations because we don't, we typically don't deal with them. But I think it's an important piece of the whole economic growth. We want to make sure that we're creating the environment in town for the economy to grow. And if there are, if there are spots that are stumbling blocks, we need to look at those. And I think the regulations sometimes can be a stumbling block. Particularly if we.
If I may, I'm going to move that over here because I think it's pretty closely regulated with your other comment and my comment as well.
Is this very akin to the, the stretch code review that we've just done?
Be, be very similar to that, yeah. Another one that's come up is food trucks. You know, we, we're hopefully going to have a bylaw at some point for food trucks. Let's make sure the regulations are in harmony with the bylaw.
Well, the bylaw tends to be the regulation for it and then.
I think what you're kind of.
I might be using regulations.
No, I, I think you're just like the procedures, the policies and procedures of actually getting the things done. So like, for example, like I, I just put it over here, and if I shouldn't, correct me. But you have reduced number of meetings for applicants and continue to improve permitting, which I think are subsets of what we're talking about here. So one of my big bugaboos is, how, is how, is how challenging it is for new developments in town, right? And I think reviewing regulations, which I believe is also something that we put up last year, and I think it's underway, is to basically go to the building department. You know, how are you doing this? What do you see as challenges to people applying? What do you think maybe we could be doing to streamline this? And we talked about last year about when a new development comes into place, make sure that there are meetings that are being held between the planner, the conservation department, the building department, maybe the fire department to talk about what sort of things we need to make sure that we're doing and to make sure that they don't have to do the same thing for four different groups, for four different reviews. And just to try and streamline all these policies.
The pre-construction meeting.
A pre-construction meeting is a great example, and I've worked in jurisdictions that have those and they're incredibly helpful. Where the developers sit down with the team from the town and everyone can figure that conversation out. Now, obviously, that's, that's focused on new development, our building. But generally, right, permitting for, if you want to have an event on our, on our, on our property, right? What does that process looks like? I know you know what that process is, but maybe have a meeting where people discuss the challenges. Bring people in that are frequently going in front of these groups.
I think you just referred something tonight that we're going to talk about that as well.
Yes, correct. We did refer to, to economic development. So stuff like that where we have people, like maybe we bring in people from the land use attorney's office, Coogan and Smith, who's in front of planning board all the time. What challenges do you see dealing with the planning board? How do you think that, you know, the town planner or the planning board, how can we streamline this process? And you know, it's like, because they have, you know, their meeting with conservation, their meeting with building, their meeting with planning, they have all these different things that they have to do to get a development in town. And we've had a reputation over the years to be difficult to deal with. And I know that we've made progress in making that better, but reputations are hard to shake and it's probably something that we continue to work on. So I think all three of those are the same.
Correct.
We good?
Yeah.
Expand offerings for entertainment and art activities for residents to enjoy and participate. Thanks, guys, by the way. E.G. a community.
Theater or concert venue.
Thank you. Expand offerings for entertainment and art activities for residents to enjoy and participate, for example, a community theater or a concert venue.
Was that from John?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was thinking especially like when we're, for example, the Allen Ave property or Emerald Square Mall, when it, you know, eventually becomes viable for something else. Potentially, we could benefit from something like.
Like a community center?
Sort of, sort of like a community center, or even like, if we sold it to a group that, which it may not even be much of a thing anymore, but something like, even like the stadium theater in one socket. That could bring in a lot of people to come to North Attleboro, even go out in North Attleboro, that would increase.
The town has a district, they have that place, the district where they bring live music venues in. Yeah, we've, we've been there quite a few times.
That'll get people going out, plus they'll email texts internally from selling concessions, things like that.
Right.
Something I think we'd benefit from, and I've actually heard from a lot of people.
Yeah.
I think that's something. I think that's a cool idea. I mean, something downtown, just sort of help drive traffic downtown, kind of promote cultural, social and sarcastic events right down in the downtown area. I think one thing that, and I'm not trying to, this isn't like either or, we can do both, but like, that if we move forward with the new high school project, it's been a lot of talk about having that new enlarged auditorium become available for community groups and community theater and stuff like that. To be able to leverage that in our own town. So I think that, that hopefully will be coming out of the pipeline in the next, you know, three, four years as another option, right, for, for folks to.
It's food trucks.
But, yeah, but using a school venue has completely using like the other venues, you school property, you're not going to be able to serve drinks. Right?
Fair point.
So, you know, plus you want to make sure you have, well, schools, you have plenty of parking, but bringing something closer to the center of town, we run into parking issues. So the Emerald Square Mall or something like that does sound like a good viable idea.
This is a conversation that we have with the cultural council year-round, expanding the, you know, the number of events or.
I was going to say, so there's something I could really help with.
Yeah, and, you know, and looking at, you know, having, you know, something every month. And if this can be a way to join some of that, we, you know, I, I think I can see a path we're working with both, you know, the cultural council.
If we had some place to have something every month, that would be cool.
There's a pavilion down there.
We do have an outdoor movie in October, so we'll do that.
They could clean that up and that'll be a nice one.
Also own a nice piece of property.
What was that?
The pavilion could be built. Inside for like, I went to talk.
Yeah, but I know, I've been to the stadium, I know.
They're very protective of that. But you could build an outdoor amphitheater.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Right up the street. It does drive money to town and, and all that.
Oh, there.
You can buy a snack bar and potentially.
Let's keep the conversation.
That's low potential. All right, all right, all right.
This is how this council.
Finish High Street Fields. John?
No.
That's me.
High Street?
Finish High Street Fields, I think, right?
High Street Fields.
Yes.
That's a P?
No.
Finish. That's look like that was John Simmons.
Yeah, well, that's you. Oh, sorry.
High Street Fields.
Yeah, that's what I said, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not high school, high street.
Did I say high school?
You did.
High Street Fields, High School Fields, done.
Good job.
Start another one.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a, one of our ongoing projects from the athletic complexes that we've had from last year, and that's where we have it. And we'll be bringing new proposals forward this year.
Art, music and drama funding, again.
Again, that's where we're going to work very closely with the cultural council and, and bring, you know, more venues, more.
I was shocked to hear that they were cutting our programs.
Yeah, I didn't know about that either.
Let's not, let's not assume that's, that's 100% confirmed. That was something that a resident mentioned in a meeting. I also had a shared concern there, so I'm not, you know what I mean? Like, we don't have to take that with a.
Yeah, we have no idea, but. The fact that everyone in the strip is surprised, maybe, maybe it's.
I also think that your appointment of two, you know, new members on the cultural council gives you an insight today.
I was actually, I also wrote a sticky note about the, that topic, which was the art in the sixth, sixth grade. And I was, my note was to ask our school committee representative to find out about that on our behalf, as our representative, to find out about that. Let's find out what's, you know, if it's true and kind of what, why, what we can, what we can do. That could be something for us to, you know, have a conversation with this, this, you know, the school department and, or of course, this, the school committee. It's not our review, obviously, as, as councils, but it's something that I think we're interested in, obviously, is the educational quality of our kids. So that your, you as that representative are the one who kind of take that, that view for, for us into that, to that committee.
On the High Street Fields, went back to that, Darius also said by summer 2025, as far as the timeline is concerned. Look into sixth grade art.
You just, that was me. Yeah, I just said.
You just covered it.
Yeah.
Continue PFAS remediation, McKean and beyond.
That was me. Clearly, you know, we, Adam's Dell well online, right? The water is, you know, meets the mass DEP standards at this point. You know, we have McKean, which is, I think, underway right now, should be finished this year, I believe.
September.
The next, yep.
I know there's probably other wells that we need to look at, but those are, those are the two big ones. But again, it's been a consistent goal of this council to continue to, to work with DPW and BPW to make sure that this happens. And, you know, we're going to continue to do that, you know, just to make sure we're continually keeping that on the, on our list of priorities.
I believe Mark said one of, one of the last meetings last year that with the new requirements that are going to be even lower, a third well will have to be.
No, all the remaining wells will have to do.
All, eventually.
So just a real quick update on that, just because it piggybacks, this was a previous one. It's a, the mitigation strategy that we had laid out is complete. We're now in the execution of that strategy. September the second well will come online. We are below the DEPA requirements, which is 14 parts per trillion. The EPA standards are going to be four parts per trillion, a significant decrease, right? That will trigger the other two wells to have to be done. We are in litigation and are expected to receive some support from that litigation and amounts in the millions, right? But we still got about $20 million worth of work to do in the coming, but we have five years under the EPA's guidelines to do that. So we're working with our law firm to help us offset that and reduce the costs or impact to the current rate payers as we do this.
Flood prevention in control, Justin?
Yeah, along the same vein, along the same vein. I mean, we saw, you know, 10 mile of flooding, we saw this year, you know, given, you know, things like climate change and, you know, whatever it is, just heavier rains than we got in the past, right? That our, our drainage systems are being challenged here in town. So, you know, I think it's something that we want to keep on our, on our list of priorities and make sure that we're, you know, making investments in that. A lot of it is owned by private property owners, right? But where the, where the town can actually control that infrastructure, where, where we can actually make a difference, I think it's important for us to continue to consistently. These are things that you can't solve in one, one year. It's the sort of thing that we just have to consistently keep our eyes on and continue to make improvements.
So you did, this is an ongoing one, as with, and you did vote as a part of the, the past budget, $1.5 million for dredging for the 10-mile ridger. And we do have a collaborative agreement between three communities and we're continuing to work with the state. Who I think is going to probably be helpful for us in solving this problem and getting funding and support from them for this as well.
Yeah. Good point. I should have put that on my, on my card. When we talked to Congressman Ockham-Closse over the last couple of years, he informed us that water projects were, water infrastructure projects were, right? Under, under the Biden administration, a, a, a top priority for, for allocation of funds. That requests that water involved were more likely to get prioritized. If that remains, as long as that remains the same, I think it's incumbent upon us to really continue to focus on that relationship and make sure that we're getting those federal dollars as much as we can. I know you're already on it, but that's, that's something we want, we need to continue.
This is 1.5 that we've already received from the congressman for Ockham-Closse. He also gave us $1 million for PFAS mitigation. And then the 1.5 that you all have put in through capital borrowing, that's just a start. We're going to continue to drive this home and look for other dollars to help us do this.
N A E D acquires utility poles from Verizon.
Yeah, this one, it's funny, I, I had forgotten about this, at the community conversations that we had up at World War One Park. Peter Schiffman happened to mention that, I forget where exactly the split is in town, but approximately half of the utility poles in town are owned by N A E D. And the other half are owned by Verizon. And during the conversation, Mike and Peter were like, you know, it might be at some point worth exploring N A E D taking this over. And again, I think this ties in sort of with the pumping station in Emerald Square and with another of my suggestions up there, King's Grant. Where we have town infrastructure in private hands. And we should really start trying to figure out ways to bring that infrastructure under town control. Again, not a, an immediate, not something I would necessarily think would happen in the short term, but something we should start looking at and, and preparing. And King's Grant is the same thing. We know it's an issue. We know it's going to continue to be an issue. Let's be ready so that when, when the rubber hits the road, we, we're, we're good to go with it.
Councilwoman, I think you're absolutely right, and it's something the administration is very interested in, is making sure that we have the, you know, the ability to be flexible when it comes to critical infrastructure in town, right? When that's in private ownership and it presents a problem, you know, and parties are unwilling to do anything about it if it needs to be fixed. It, it puts all of us at risk and we answer the phone saying, what are you doing about this? And our answer is, well, it's not owned by us.
It's ours, right.
J R O T C.
J R O T C. J R O T C, the junior ROTC program, which is ROTC in high schools. I just think this would be a great opportunity to try and offer another educational opportunity for kids in town. You know, we have academics, we have sports, through Tri-County, we have the trades. We don't have ROTC for kids who might be interested in going in the military. In fact, I did a little research, there are only 21 high schools in the state that have J ROTC, and only one in Bristol County, New Bedford. So this could actually even potentially be a source of income for school, for the schools through school choice. We might actually be able to attract some kids from other communities who maybe want to participate in this. So again, something to get it on the radar, start talking about it, it's not our decision either, this would be a school committee decision, but if we can at least start getting them thinking about it and considering it, who knows?
There are some requirements to this as well, but you have to be accepted as a community, but the federal government does pay 50% of the costs.
Bring new senior center online.
That was me. Just exactly what it said, you know, this, this year, let's, you know, I hope that we can, you know, realize the plan that Mr. Porter put in place and get that senior center up and running, right? Get the new senior center going, this is obviously going to be great for our, for our community.
It's ongoing, we're, we're finishing up the ARPA fund from Bristol County on that one, we have 1.89 million dollars to spend in the next 90 days, which is already accountable, we've got plans and we're working for that, and that's happening. We'll probably have to come back to you after that, because this may trigger some code compliance requirements, right, above and beyond some of the other things that we've done. So, but we're beginning to start utilizing that facility in January.
Is that done picking yet?
Explore infrastructure improvements to enhance road safety and minimize accident potential.
That was me. I think that's something that's kind of ongoing as far as exploring speed limits and things like that, but also just looking at where could we, like, for example, what I noticed a lot is turning a left on Mount Hope Street, either way, is inherently dangerous. And it's not just that, but it's, as one example, just potentially looking at areas where we can improve on traffic, traffic safety is pretty much what I wrote.
Like that 106 intersection.
106 is one that we're working on with Plainville, but we're also, I would go back to, this is an ongoing one that we're doing, and we did create the T SAG as a body to start fielding, and we did, we have implemented some changes and have been responsive to the community. So I think this is a perfect one to line up with other initiatives that we're doing, we're happy to take this on.
Fire station.
It's all dependent on other votes in town, but if there's a chance to move the fire station forward in any way, shape, or form, I would like to see that done.
So this is an ongoing one from the previous one, we have this as well, the feasibility study is complete, and Chief Coleman will brief me on that when he returns from his temporary duty assignment, where he's all getting educated here. So we'll be happy to talk about this one, and there's a lot, it is contingent on some other actions.
I'll back you up on them too, I think it's, that's one that I want to see get done, you know, this year, you know, three years from now, five years from now, let's, let's, let's work to make sure we can, we can keep that project on.
Personally, I would love to hear about a summary of the feasibility study as well someday on our agenda.
Sure.
Sure. All right, on to safety, emergency preparedness, and human rights. Pet store bylaw held over from last year.
Held over because I dropped the ball and didn't do anything about it.
Not entirely true, sir.
Is that true?
I just didn't do anything. I would like to move forward with a bylaw that prevents the sale of mammals as pets, dogs, cats, hamsters, guinea pigs, all of it. Want to make sure that obviously doesn't affect, you know, adopting animals, paying adoption fees for animals, but a pure marketplace to buy a pet, I would like, yes, I would like to see them gone.
So.
And we don't have any.
Right. So just make sure we don't get any.
Please don't let the council vice president fool you, because we asked him to hold on this one because the state was taking under consideration the, a law, a Mass General law to put this into effect. Did that pass?
Yes.
It did.
It just did. I think that's what Patty said. Remember, we said, we just have to adopt it now.
So I think there's, so.
Fantastic.
So you waited, you were good.
Maybe it were the wait, sir, so, but we'll gladly take that one off, put that one in the, because that's a carryover from the current year.
Yes.
Multifamily dumpster regulations.
Yeah, we were in the parade, and we went by a few multi-b buildings that had overflowing dumpsters, and we have, you know, community people talking about our infestation, our, you know what I mean?
Infestation.
Yeah, that one, of, you know, of the certain animals and stuff. So I think that, you know what, if we have some kind of violation code or some kind of fine for not, you know, keeping your dumpsters, you know.
Below the fill lines and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Always think that there is.
I think there may be something.
Decision just needs to be.
Or maybe something we're not just not, we're not using.
And maybe if not, maybe there needs to have some teeth, and maybe it's something worth we considering, but I can give you a quick update on the infestation. So our three-pronged approach has been very successful, and it's been built on three parts. One, which was the smart boxes, which we employed and deployed this July, and so we're monitoring the activity, it's been very little, actually, on the smart boxes. Then the second one was education through the health department and was, you know, collaborative with all our other departments that are impacted, animal control, for example, and providing education, right? And then an exciting one, which is the reintroduction of the appropriate natural predators, right? Owls, for example. So we've been working with Boy Scouts and a Boy Scout project, Eagle Scout project, to help reintroduce, you know, owls to be able to address that, because those are, you know, nocturnal hunters and would be one of the natural remedies for it. So that three-pronged stroke approach has been very effective, and we're doing it, and right now, we, I think we have very good results.
Have you actually introduced any owls into the town yet?
The project's still being developed and implemented right now, is that.
You can't actually bring an owl in, you have to encourage them, so it's kind of like.
Build the house.
If you build the house.
Field of dreams. This is the field dream, you build it and they will come.
And they will.
And they will.
It's like subsidized housing for owls.
There you go. Oh, there we go, see, like, everybody gets a quarter while they're dumb.
Another thing I'm adding.
Can we use that as a percentage?
I don't know if this is an issue, but like inspections of dumpsters as well, if there's holes in dumpsters, that's.
No, I actually think this is a good one, and the administration would be very interested in finding out, and maybe there's something already in place, and if not, that's just an easy report, but if not, if we find a gap, this would be a great way, a segue for us to investigate that and bring it back and look at it and then propose something to the town council.
Actually, you can even give the town people a chance to drop a dime, you know, and say, listen, I live next door to this dumpster that nobody's taking care of.
311 works well.
Hate snitches.
No bad ideas.
So, the next one would be sober house regulations, I know that's ongoing.
That's an ongoing one, so we're going to come back to you, we got the input from that last meeting, we've made some adjustments, so we're going to bring that back to you when we get into full sessions.
I said, enter into talks with major healthcare providers like Mass General, Brigham and Women's, Boston Children's, to potentially open branch offices to enhance local access to quality healthcare. I know it's more ambitious, but when we're looking at, you know, potential, like I said, Emerald Square, from Allen Avenue, you know, we have an aging population that don't want to drive to bus and to get their, to get their, whether it's cancer treatment or primary care, whatever.
Confusion, yeah.
You know, we really don't have a lot of that.
Yeah, Patriots Place has a beautiful facility, we can, something like that.
But look, this is, I think, a great idea, and I think the, the, the one thing that might spur this in our area, right, is the new development at Sturdy, right, and, because they're adding some new centers, right? So this could potentially bring in other providers, and maybe they'll set up shop here, and I think competition does well in the healthcare market, and we could certainly use that.
Solutions for more handicap parking in town.
Yeah, I actually spoke with Mark about this not too long ago, and which was brainstorming on some ideas, because I have a sister-in-law who's handicapped, who cannot get around in the center of its town. You know, her husband drives her around, they can't always find a parking space, if there's more than two handicap people in town, you're not finding someplace to park. Plus, there are some other road sidewalk issues that, because these are the people that are using their, their motorized wheelchairs, they're the ones that see the problems that we don't see on a regular basis. Maybe thinking about using, you know, something in town like behind Town Hall after 5:00 PM or after 6:00 PM, we can open that up to using just for handicap parking. Or the front U in front of community school, use that anytime after 5 o'clock, it could be used for that. So like I said, I was talking to Mark, we were just brainstorming about different ways to just bring in some more handicap parking for the, for the town.
I think that's a great idea and something we'd like to work with the Commission on Disabilities, I think they'd be a great partner for us and to be able to do this, and I think, you know, working with all the different organizations, we might be able to expand it where there's not parking, and I like the time delimited use of that, so maybe that's a good way to do it.
Traffic enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, this is a sort of an ongoing one, sort of with the, similar to the Roden issue, it may be more of a perception than a reality type of thing, but the perception is that people are driving more aggressively and speeding more in town and that the enforcement is lacking. So I'm not quite sure how we need, I don't know whether it's we need to better publicize the enforcement that's going on or make the enforcement more visible.
Mug shots and speeders.
You know, utilize the sign in front of Town Hall, you know? But, you know, I think somehow either, either not enough people are being ticketed or not enough is being made of the people that are being ticketed. The perception is that nobody's being ticketed and people are just treating North Attleboro like the Indy 500.
I know DPW and the police department have been before us before to talk about these issues.
Yep. It's like, it's like. It's an ongoing issue, you know, but it needs to be continually.
I got a speeding ticket going by the school on Route 1 in Pawtucket.
Posted.
You know what I mean? And it came in the mail.
It's on camera.
It came in the mail. I was like, huh, that was me.
No cameras in Massachusetts.
Oh, you could just.
You can lobby your local representatives.
No cameras. Improve cohesion and synergy between school committee and town council.
That was me. I mean, I think that's pretty self-explanatory, and it's also.
Written free each policy for OPEB? Free cash. Free cash policy for OPEB. Yes.
Yes.
Justin also had that same one?
What does it say? What does it say?
OPEB policy.
Establish a.
I think you have written policies that you follow, we can only help you on rating.
So we, historically, we had, the old former government, we had a free cash policy, a free cash stabilization policy, pretty sure we've kind of adhered to it pretty closely, the, the old, the old policy, which was just like, money went to, any free cash would first go to pay the excess snow and ice over the, what was budgeted, which was $250,000 historically, right? And then everything else went to, free cash went to stabilization, right? We, as a, as a council, we sort of had a more nuanced view of that, where like, once, once stabilization was, once hit that 5% target that we wanted, you know, maybe it doesn't all have to go to, you know, stabilization at this point, there's probably better uses, and there are better uses of those dollars in real time. And so I think any sort of policy that this would, would reflect, I think, that, that sort of, you know.
Refresh town manager evaluation process.
Yeah, that was me, and then, again, this is more just putting it on there so that I can be held accountable to do it, because I, I, you know, inevitably, I'll, I'll forget, I'll forget to do it, and then it'll be last minute, and I'll be like, oh, we're gonna send this out, so I, I want to actually just take another look at, take another look at what we're doing, right, and how we're handling that review and publishing, publishing it and stuff, so I'll, I'll take that on, just wanted to get that out there, I think it's something that we could do.
Assume this is great minds think alike again, but yours was communications targeted?
Yeah, I think over, particularly over the last year, we have done, the town manager's office hiring Taylor and all, has done a tremendous job of increasing the communications in the town. I think we've, we've come leaps and bounds from where we were a year ago. What I see now is that while we're doing very good at generating communications for everyone in town, there are maybe opportunities to target communications at specific segments of town. And this came about through something I had mentioned, Tony and I talked about, you know, there are people downtown who, a lot of people downtown who don't have vehicles. Let's target communications to them so that they know about early voting at Town Hall, so they don't say, so that they don't have the excuse of, well, I can't go to the high school because I can't get there, so that's why I didn't vote. Oh, well, you can go to Town Hall, you can walk there. That sort of thing, targeted at specific audiences. And then a corollary to that would be kind of what I was talking about with traffic enforcement. Let's get those statistics out there a little better. Let people see, you know, hey, every, every, every week, this is how many tickets NAPD is issuing. People are, people are getting ticketed for speeding, you know, it's not, it's not, so target, targeting to a little more specific audiences than, than just sort of the general communications, which I think we have gotten very good at. No complaints about that at all.
There might be interested, people that are interested in signing up for specific text chains, right? They say like, tell me this stuff, and other people will say, no, thank you. Like, for me, I had the same general idea, right, so I think it's, it's multi-pronged. Like, for example, personally, right, my water was shut off last week, or no, last month, and I didn't know, I didn't know it was shut off, and I had to call and figure out why it was shut off. And like, that's the type of stuff where maybe it doesn't have to go townwide code red, right? But maybe there's some sort of communication that could go out, you know, I'm not saying you have to go door to door with a piece of paper that says your water will be shut off from 8 to 4, there's probably an electronic way to communicate that without me just not having water and then having to go on the website or call into Town Hall and figure out why I don't have water and what I'm getting back, right? You know, maybe like, hey, tomorrow you won't have water, and I could, you know, fill up some jugs, like, stuff like that. But also, like, I hear people around town complain about things like potholes, because they don't even know that the, with 311 exists, and I, you know, it's hard, because if people don't pay attention, it's really hard to reach them, but there's, like, 311's an amazing program, and the fact that they fill potholes every Thursday is unprecedented, as far as I can tell, in other communities, and people don't even know it's there. And, you know, we can't make people sign up for code red, but I don't think everyone in town is even aware that it's an option. So I just think we're doing a good job of getting the information out, it's just, there's a, there's a gap between, you know, some people are really involved in town, and some people just live there, and trying to get there, if they're not on, if they're not on everything North Attleboro, they're not hearing things. And, you know, to Dan's point about traffic enforcement, people are going to complain regardless, but at least we can point to things and say, these are the things that we're doing, these are the things that are available to you, maybe put something on the town, I'm sure it is on the town website now, that says, you know, town communications that you can sign up for, and just kind of try and prove that. It's just a way that people, people understand that their government is working for.
So code red does allow us to geofence, and we're able to take a map and pick whether you've signed up or not, right? If we have a number associated with that address, it will reach out and call you, so that, that does exist.
That covers mine.
Yes, and I don't know, water outages are a code red.
They did, I do think they did call, and they did, I think, flyer some of these, and there was a, you know.
I would say me and my two neighbors I talked to were not aware, but.
And, and, and they're not perfectly.
I called them all at home. No, I didn't.
No, you should. At 2:00 in the morning.
That might kind of pig his backs on that as well. That might kind of fingers backs on that as well.
So this one, code red system for flood spots, power outage, town-wide emergency information.
Matter of fact, we used it tonight.
Yeah.
For the boil water.
Boil water.
Point one.
Purple heart town banners.
Again, this was something I was just talking to you that you've already, I thought was, had got dropped last year because we had such a changeover in the veterans' office, but I guess.
No, this is, goes with the banners program. And look, Counselor Gould actually brought this one to me a little while ago as well. So, you know, the poles that we have in our downtown are antique poles and, you know, decorative lighting, and we put a banner on. We're working with Dana, the Downtown North Attleboro Associates, and we're coming up with a public-private partnership program where the town is going to establish and put the banners on the poles downtown. They'll get a, the swing sponsorship placard that will go underneath and be attached to it. But on the poles in the park in front of Town Hall and inside that park, we are going to dedicate those to veterans. I've asked the advisory board to take a look at nominating potential people that we would put on those banners for that. I mean, we do have some very highly decorated individuals here in North Attleboro that have served that might be appropriate to recognize and honor something. And then there may, and not just that, but we can also rotate those. So that's underway. That's part of the banner program that we're going to roll out. That is contingent on the new poles that we have that will arrive sometime September, October timeframe, or October, November timeframe.
Maybe considering retrofitting certain poles in town at major areas where people enter the town, like, I'm thinking like Triborough Plaza when people get off at 95.
Yeah, and we could target specific banners for those types of things. But we're looking to work with a sponsorship program, like, through Dana, right? So we're looking at a one-year deal with them, because they had the existing program, but then taking back control of the ones that are in front of Town Hall and on the sidewalk in front of Town Hall as well.
Somebody had suggested that if you have a banner in front of your establishment, that maybe you could sponsor that banner.
And that's what, I'll leave that to whoever we form the public-private partnership. Right now, it's going to be Dana in this first year, right, that we've agreed to. And then if it's them going forward, great, or whoever it may be, organization. But banner program's coming. It's something that the council president and vice president asked me to take a look at, you know, through Counselor Sabogen, and then bring it back. And so it's something that's been ongoing. We've got a great idea. I know that Taylor is working on that as well right now, so.
Last one, I think this kind of goes along with Dan in mind, but I can barely read it, so. Do a monthly press release or newsletter to get word out about town council actions and context behind decisions.
Yeah, kind of like what you were just saying. Yep. It's hard for people to find information a lot, especially, like you're saying, if they're not on social media, or even if they are, they might not be getting the correct information. I have heard from people that they have a hard time even going on the website and finding out what's really going on. So maybe if we just, you could possibly be taking up half, even a quarter of a page in the North Star Reporter or the Sun Chronicle or something like that, just, yep, going over the recent, yep, our recent actions, our recent.
I mean, I just mean like.
We could also, on that front, right, and just thinking, mimicking other notifications. If there were emails you could sign up for and check the box.
Yeah, like a list serve, yeah.
Or like text messages where it would say, you could sign up for that type of communication and come by a text, and it's a link that would be, you know, you would avoid.
So town council loaded this, this, and this to us.
Maybe like the trash barrels, right? Because, I mean, everything North Attleboro after the trash barrels was an S show. And it was like, one person complaining the barrels were too small, and then the next person complaining they're too expensive, and it's like, you can't have both, right? So it was like, even though I feel like we did a good job of communicating that, there was still a.
Relatively no complaints today about that.
Yeah.
Say it again?
Relatively no.
Yeah, now, now everyone's happy with the program. But at first, everyone's like, change, and they freaked out, and it was like.
And so this kind of goes in line with the program that you guys had and the suggestion that we took to announce when all the meetings. We have a specific social media blast that goes out with all the meeting schedules that are on there, right? So that is in place, and we've been doing that, right? Yeah, we could look at how we could take this to the next level. Sun Chronicle, if that's something they want, we'll gladly, we put out press releases multiple times in a week around different things. So I'm happy to do it, and I think that, you know, if it gets more traction, the more people come in and voice their opinion and tell, you know.
Is there something on the website that says, like, sign up for town communications?
Up at the top on the banner, there's, you sign up to, and you can be a part of it, and you'll get the notifications anytime something changes on the website.
And I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue pro or con on the town council, you know, town council communication, but I've had a lot of discussions, both this with other counselors and thought a lot about this, actually. The challenge I think we have as a council is that we're a political body, and, you know, who actually writes the update of what we do, you know? And is it, you know, and the last thing I think we want is one person kind of controlling a narrative about things we're doing.
Or the worst, it would be, you could start an argument between counselors, you know, one person, they post a newsletter.
Like the library.
You don't want me, I mean, I'm not saying I would.
Just to be safe, I'll write it.
Exactly. You don't want anyone, you don't want any of us doing it.
Sure.
So that's, that's like a serious concern with that idea.
What could go wrong?
What if you just did a blast and then hit a link? And then it shows up, you know, the.
Well, all of your agendas are posted, right? All of your minutes are posted. And, but I will, Taylor is available to however you want to structure this. I mean, but what I would ask is, put it up there. Let us figure out how we might be able to support you and potentially ideas, because, you know, I don't know that I have all the ideas and solutions, but I've got a great group of department heads that have a lot of great ideas and, you know, in different ways, doing a lot of experience, you know, at different meetings and stuff, and maybe they've got something. So, like, I agree with you, Council President. There's nothing up there that's a bad idea or a good idea. We don't know. I mean, I think the realm of possibility is, we're going to take it, and we're going to figure out how we could eventually, you know, provide something and keep this going, right? And that's what I think the commitment is here.
I'd say I support that, too. We just want to make sure we find a way that it's apolitical and it's factual. It's not, you know, it's not someone's spin on what we talked about, it's just like, you know.
And it might just be a link to the minutes.
CNN and Fox News and his letter that goes out.
Well, and that's why, like, some cities have an ombudsman that would technically be a neutral party to disseminate that kind of information. But, yeah, that's a good idea, Mike. Maybe it's simply a matter of making it easier to find the minutes.
Yeah, maybe it's a social media link with the.
I don't want to be, no one wants to be minutes. But I'm saying, like, for the trash barrel thing, right, like, that could be a DPW post about what changed, right? The cost went up because of X, or it was going to go up Y because of C.
I mean, we had a whole meeting here to talk about that.
No one's watching these.
But we're crossing, we're crossing here.
Yeah, we are.
There's a communication strategy, and then there's.
Counselor, this might be, just to pull this thread slightly for one more second here, this is where we have been bringing in North TV, and we've been creating the snippets.
Yep.